Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, November 26, 2024 Culvertown Council meeting to order. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. Your participation is your consent to be rebroadcast on the Culver YouTube channel. Also, if you have any electronic devices, if you please put them on airplane or turn them off, whatever you have to do to silence them. Thank you. For a call, please.
William Covinger.
Present.
Phil Giffins. It's absent. Jenny Monroe. You're in the near.
Here.
Sally Chardy.
Here.
Thank you. Will you join me all in place for the pledge of allegiance?
Thanks, sir.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the November 14, 2024 meeting. Play a chance to review or any business or corrections. Now they're taking a motion. Mr. Mayor moves to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Monroe. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So same sign. Thank you. I noticed that we have two guest speakers tonight, and I think one is not here yet, but so we're going to kind of reverse the order and the representatives have been focused for One Marshall County, please. You'll introduce yourself and come forward.
My name is Lisa Slumta, and I am a fellow with an hostess in South Bend.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name's Gary Nighting. I'm employed, sort of, I've just retired recently, or I'm in the process of it, from Itamco over in Argus and Plymouth, but I'm also the president of One Marshall County. So I feel very privileged to be able to be here tonight, primarily because this is sort of where this all started. When Culver went for the Stellar Award back many, many years ago now, I guess, you guys inspired there to be an award to be gone after with the county. So Marshall County got the Stellar Award, and in that process, we then began an organization called Martin County Crossroads. So tonight, what I'm representing is One Marshall County, which is the rebranding of Marshall County Crossroads. So you have some very esteemed people that were very instrumental in that. Jenny was one of them. Marty Ostervan was another one. And Kevin, right now, is on our board, and we are here to present tonight to sort of reintroduce you to what we're all about, what we've been doing, and hopefully some of the track that we're planning on going on in the future. So as opposed to what Marshall County Crossroads was back when it was started, it became basically a conduit to handle the funds that came from the Stellar Grant. There ended up being a little over $14 million that got awarded to the county, and that money needed to have an organization that could pass the money out based upon the proposals and the different projects that went through the different communities. One Marshall County, at this point in time, is not that kind of an organization. We're more, and I've got it up on the screen, it's on the paper, but if you would like to hear more about that, I can give you more information. But basically, we're just an organization that's created to empower the strategic community and economic development initiatives. We're not a government agency. We're not an economic agency by and large, but we have a lot of strategic initiatives that we're trying to put forth, and tonight, we would like to introduce you to that. And so those of you who do know me, not many of you at this point, and I'm glad to be able to introduce myself to you, I've been involved in the strategic planning for the region, which has been able to receive almost $180 million over the last seven years. Marshall County's been blessed to be part of that with the South Bend Regional Partnership. So South Bend, St. Joe County, Elkhart County, and Marshall County are all part of a regional group that has really tapped into, I want to call, the essence of collaborative work and to regionalism. So that's sort of a foreign thing to many people. They like to think of themselves as being independent, and they want their town to be the only thing they think about, but in this age that we're living in, regionalism is a very important part of how the funds get dispersed. So we have five basic pillars that we go through and we look at. There are themes based upon housing infrastructure, quality of life, quality of place, education, workforce development, and then business innovation and growth. And we don't propose that we are the experts on that, so what we've done is we take the most dominant industry or organization, I should say, within our county. In the case of the business innovation and growth, we use Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. For educational workforce development, we use the Lifelong Learning Network, which was established basically during the Marshall County Crossroads era. And then the quality of life is primarily the Marshall County Community Foundation. And then we have quality of place and the infrastructure, which we don't have any direct organizations that are really leading that at this point in time. So what we've done is we've created those five pillars. We have 28 board members right now. Culver's represented primarily by Kevin, and then Marty as well is sort of an emeritus because he had come from Marshall County Crossroads. So those five thematic committees represent then hundreds of people on different committees throughout the county. What we're trying to do is be a collaborative organization that takes all the information that we can possibly gather and see what kind of cross things that make sense between those organizations, and then we try to put some strategic plans together in order to be ready, that's a pun, ready, when the next group of funding comes through, whether it's federal, state, or it could come from benevolent organizations such as the Lilly Endowment. And there's been at least 40 million that came in from the Lilly Endowment over the last seven years to our region, and Marshall County Community Foundation is now working on Gift Eight, which is a large amount of money that possibly could come to Marshall County. We're still waiting to hear whether or not that that happens or not. So we formed a board earlier in spring this year. Bylaws were approved. We've been supporting some of the different initiatives that have come out. Ready 2.0 is one of them, and I just mentioned about Gift Eight with the Marshall County Foundation. The committees have begun meeting together. We don't meet them formally as far as the board is concerned. They basically report to the board to allow us to know what's been going on in the different committees, but we're hoping that during the course of this next six months, basically, we're going to be developing a master strategy plan for the county. At this point in time, there really isn't any organization that is working collaboratively across the county, community by community, and I will say those 28 members, I believe if you go to the next page, which shows the board of directors, you're going to see that for the first time, I think, in a long time, we have every community being represented on our board. So Town Culver, Bremen, La Paz, Plymouth, Bremen, I said Bremen, Argus is the other one, I couldn't think of that for a second. So we have all those, as well as we have some industries. So we have Jason Nine coming from South Wire, which is a large employer over Bremen. I've been involved as the sort of the industry representative from the Plymouth area and the Argus area. And then we also have some of the schools represented. Jeremy Riffle comes from the town of Bourbon. He is the superintendent of schools over there. And then we have the various different communities as well. We have been working a lot on trying to make sure that we walk this path very carefully, but yet with bold initiatives. So we're trying to make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not thinking small, we're trying to think large, but we're also trying to make sure that we are using every organization that already exists. We don't want to recreate anything. We don't want to walk on somebody's territory and take their funding. As opposed to that, we're trying to grow the pie and allow everyone to get as much funding as they can if they're a nonprofit organization, and that's really what, what it's all about. So these five different plans and deliverables are coming into our group. We'll be creating strategic plan. It'll be objectives and projects oriented, and then we will be sharing those recommendations from what we find from all these various groups. This current year is going to be about the strategic plan, basically. As opposed to the stellar groups, there was funding available. There was actually, we're going to call it an administrative fee if nothing else, that was allowed to be used in order to fund, and even though Marshall County Crossroads didn't have staff, it was all volunteer, and that's what we currently have been as well. We have no paid staff by and large. We have been using InFocus as our administrative consultant, so they have been doing, you know, preparation for like a meeting tonight, or in the case of our board meetings, they'll prepare the agendas, and then they've been meeting with the various committees in order to help them develop a structure for themselves. We have an annual budget that isn't firm yet, but we're, we're trying to raise approximately $200,000, it's $215,000. We've been successful thus far with, we're 100% right now with the, with the presentations that we've done. The city of Plymouth has been gracious in the way that they looked at that. You folks are the next ones that have been on the agenda. I believe we're going to be talking to redevelopment here in Culver in.
Few weeks now.
Few weeks, few more weeks. Basically, from what I understand, and I apologize that no one from One Marshall County's come before you before, but that you had approved this on your budget, I believe it had been last year. So it was actually in the budget for this year, and what we're looking for now is just the approval or the authorization for the money that was previously budgeted. I'm here to answer any questions, or I'll just run out the door if you want me to, whatever, whatever makes your preference.
I think last year after I left and before Kevin arrived, Marty presented from One Marshall County, and you all had approved finding the dollars from that request. I don't know that what the case was for redevelopment at the time, because I don't think I was yet on redevelopment, but I know the council voted to, was it 20,000 or 25,000? 20,000, yeah. And I only know because I had to present a contract to you guys around the same time since I was watching that meeting, but I don't know that anything ever happened beyond that, but I would certainly support that. So I don't, I don't know that it was in the budget so much as a discussion after Marty presented. I believe it was a discussion after Marty presented, but council said, yes, yeah, let's try to look for it. Now that was '23, and now we're at the end of '24, and we've got the budget done for '25 and didn't have that discussion for '25. So I mean, I guess as a special, as a treasurer, you know, are you looking for these funds in '24 or in '25, or does it matter?
So I presented this to, I did a presentation to Plymouth Redevelopment a few weeks ago, and because there's been a fair amount, and whether you were aware of it or not, there was a fair amount of, I'm going to say some positive, but mostly negative commentations about what was going on in the paper, and a lot of innuendos about us being a quasi-shadow government organization, you know, you can imagine all the conspiracies that were thrown in there. So we have been very careful in the fact of what we've been asking for and that we really want to prove that we are what we say we are. So to answer your question directly, what I asked for redevelopment, they had the money already approved for this year. I didn't even ask for them to put it in the budget for next year yet. I asked them actually to just honor the amount that they had said for this year, and we can readdress it, hopefully that we can show you some very positive things that are accomplished with these funds. So yes, I'm not asking for next year, but if you don't have it for this year, then I guess I'll ask for next year.
Okay. We do know where it's at. We basically have to do a special appropriation for this year, right? And that time is short.
Sure.
Yeah, to be able to do that. So let me see what, what's available. My other question is, or I mean, I know I saw it was the, and then we're going to go to the same, yeah. And for reference, the date that's on there is in relation to, we invited this to Jenny, I think, a week or two ago, and so this is the one that was sent before. I think they were trying to be on the last agenda, but it's in the, oh, it's in the post. That's fine. So I would just, just for audit protection, I'm sure you're going to hit, if I'm not the first.
Sure.
You're going to hear a couple of other times, just audit protection problems.
Absolutely.
We have it in place. I think if, if we did do a special appropriation, Karen, would this be out of the general fund, or would it have to come out of it? It would probably be out of the general fund. It would probably be under. I mean, if we're, if you're looking for it yet this year, I can, you know, in the next couple of weeks, I'll know where budgets are and be able to see what, what's available. I, I don't think we can expect to bring grant dollars to the region without this planning team, period. That's in my opinion, even when it was Crossroads, and the return on investment with what Crossroads did with Stellar is far exceeds the ask, and I do think it'll be a more impactful collaborative team if they have funds to work with to potentially either continue working with InFocus or eventually hire their own director. Paid people are expected to get work done, and it's been volunteers since 2019, and I do think it's involved into something that will be permanent, which we need regional planning, or we're never going to get a piece of the South Bend Elkhart Partnership Funds. We have to be at that table. This organization can be at that table where we don't have to keep tapping the same volunteers and be able to ultimately be able to pay someone, and they can't do that without funds. And I know there's an effort to raise money from corporations as well. That's part of this, but you know, someone who worked on that team for a long time, it's really hard to sustain volunteer work and bring in millions of dollars. It's just, you know, I got fat doing it, so if I told you anything. So I obviously, you know, having spent time on that team, I no longer sit on the board or any of the subcommittees, but I obviously passionately support One Marshall County, and I really appreciate the fact that you're still sticking with it. And InFocus is just, goes well beyond on the return on investment for what, for what they get paid by any organization.
And for some context, kind of building off of what you said, InFocus is taking, is holding the role of personnel right now, and I, currently, we are on contract for the next several months, but One Marshall County is looking at potentially hiring personnel over the course of 2025, but if not, it could be that InFocus continues to stay on or that an executive director is hired and some paid staff to help fill out the operations of the organization as well as help support the committee work. And one of our goals with paid staff is to help prevent volunteer burnout, so that people have a little bit more buy-in, a little bit more investment in the work they're doing, and more reason to put more time to it. Besides passion, which is wonderful, but that you still need to pay the bills and put food on the table, so trying to make sure that people are happy and healthy, being able to do what we need to.
Address the council a little bit, but from a town manager perspective, also recognizing, I said on, on the board, but there are specific areas of overlap that can be addressed. One of the issues we have, Jenny, you're well aware of this, I'm sure, when we're competing with larger entities such as South Bend and Mitchellwog, Elkhart region, we, if we compete against each other in Marshall County, we consume ourselves. If we can cooperate with one another, we can actually compete with larger entities when it comes to the funding. There has been a spirit of cooperation in these meetings, and two specific areas that we're going to need to address as a town moving forward is downtown development and on Main Street and economic development. And I've had several conversations towards those ends with Bremen and Argus, and I think being a cooperative entity, we might be able to pull together, we have the common need there. And so I think we can, we, we can write grant proposals that make sense for all of us and allow us to access larger sums of money. I think the second area is in within the arts and culture area, and there's been a lot of discussions with Wild Rose and some great programming going on in Plymouth and Bremen, and I think there's a solid opportunity, and that's just an example of only two conversations I've been privy to during the meetings that I can immediately see would be a wonderful resource for One Marshall.
Well, when I think about, you know, the communities put very little money into the whole Stellar application. We all had some investment. Obviously, if you had a project, you had a match as well, but for the investment, the return was just, you know, thousands of dollars to one. That's how little investment the communities had to make. And to me, a $20,000 investment over the course of the year is minimal for the town.
Yeah, the backup, what you're saying, Jenny. I've been on the South Bend Regional Partnership Board for quite a few years now because I was involved in the entrepreneurship group. The reason that we are all on the South Bend Partnership Group, which is St. Joe County, Elkhart County, Marshall County, was because of a $10,000 investment by the Marshall County Community Foundation to participate in the grant writing when they applied for the very first regional census. So if you think about it, that was a $10,000 investment for Marshall County, very small. I think the grant was $100,000, but they, they allowed them to, to buy in basically with $10,000. So it takes just a small amount sometimes in order to become a participant, and right now, there's $180 million that's come to this region. Obviously, Marshall County hasn't got all that, but it's actually transformed into over $2 billion in projects. So it, the state understands this. They're looking at it now. Governor Braun will see how much he understands the dynamics of how that's going to work directly, or if he wants to rebrand it and cause it to be a little bit different, but the economic output that came from that is indisputable. And so, like I said, $10,000, I'm sure at the time, everybody's going, why would we spend $10,000 to buy a grant? Well, it ended up becoming a very important thing, so.
And all of the grants have moved to regional.
Yes.
Look, it's Stellar. It started off in individual communities, which great, but that grant no longer exists for an individual community. Everything's gone regional. All the federal programs have gone regional, and if we don't have, to me, this is our only opportunity for a regional planning team as well. There's no one else doing regional planning in Marshall County.
And we do want to be, I know that Gary mentioned this already, but we do want to be very intentional about hearing from every other community, and that's a lot of the work of the committees will be over in the timeline in the current state analysis portion of the committees are going to be going and speaking with people in the community, different businesses, nonprofits, various community stakeholders, just to see what the needs are and what projects are kind of in the works, or people are dreaming up and see where we can provide support and where things can align with the, with the strategic plan that we're going to be developing as well.
Any other questions?
I don't have any. I, I would make the motion to support the 20,000 for this year through a special appropriation, assuming that we have the timeline for that, and that Karen can work it out on the legal end of things, but so that we can take care of 2024, and then eventually a budget time look at 2025.
Mr. Monroe moves that we, I have a special appropriation for 2024. Second? Second, with Mr. Mayor, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, sir. Glad to come back anytime you'd like to give me an update, so feel free to reach back out to anybody. Very much.
In terms of our, in terms of the second guest speaker, he, Rich is dependable. I'm going to confirm the date, maybe he understood it as, as coming in December, but my understanding was it was supposed to be this meeting. I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
That was the energy one?
Yeah, yeah. And Bob and I met, Terry, I met with him.
All right. Public concern, utility, ordinance, violations, or appeal, anyone in the audience, and maybe above. Yes, sir.
I have, I have one thing that came to light since the last meeting. We had a, we have a chance to buy some Sky Air bottles. Two years ago, we bought new air packs and air bottles, and the bottles were $1,150 a piece, and we have a chance right now because the state's doing something amazing to get us air bottles for $800. So I'd like to buy five SCBA bottles, the total price of $4,000.
You have that in your budget?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Monroe moves to approve purchase of the bottle.
Not only second.
I'd say, Mr. Chardy. The amount of, that would be the amount of $4,000, Terry?
Correct.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. You go.
That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online?
We have people online, but no one's on meeting.
No one's online. Old business. We have any old business, do we?
Yes, sir. Not to my knowledge.
Okay, new business. The Plan Commission requests for council approval to use the services of Town Attorney Son Starisi for Plan Commission Case 2024-P18. You want, Don, have you heard of the speaking of Anthony?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
And the Building Commissioners, before I'm looking, he did not update me.
I can.
Yes, he did not update me.
No, it's okay. The Plan Commission had a case at their last meeting regarding, I believe it's subdivision, and I, I could be wrong, so, but they are, I think the town, the town is now kind of in the middle as the Plan Commission didn't take any action either way, and so they're just requesting to be able to use Sean for some representation and some advice as they move forward and navigate through the issue.
Both parties that were present in dispute were actually the broad attorney is to the meeting, and I think Karen articulated it well. The commission, the plan just wants to make sure they have attorney present on behalf of the town before committing anything.
I think that's reasonable, and I think.
The subdivision, and the other one is against it?
No, and it may not even be a subdivision, though. I.
It's a property dispute rest is all I know. And, and so therefore, I think that's why they need the attorney present.
I think Sean's got some background in this from his days at Plymouth, so I'm comfortable with the fact that the plan, they very rarely request legal aid, so they obviously would like to have that. So I would make a motion to approve them utilizing Sean as needed for this case.
Mr. Monroe moves with the Plan Commission engage with Town Attorney Son Starisi. Mr. Chardy, seconds, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Same sign. Thank you. You. We have a North.
Township Fire Protection.
Remind to each year, the North Bend Township contracts with our fire department to provide fire protection. At in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars, I believe. I think I put it in, in your notes. So, but we just asked that you would approve that fire protection contract for twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with North Bend Township.
Mr. Sherry moves to approve the contract with North Township. Sheriff's seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. It's North. It's North Township.
It's strange how Terry gets out of meetings.
Yeah, you know, he, he ends up, oh, he turns. Make no mistake.
Okay, board commissioner reports. Anybody here on behalf of the review?
I'm going to give you the full building commissioner report standing in for Mr. Korski tonight. October twenty twenty four, building permits applied for fifteen twenty one in September. Fees for building permits and improvement location applications Culver received. Two thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and eighty four cents for October in comparison to the fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty four. Twenty three cents in September. Zoning ordinance update. Solar ordinance draft is near completion. Senate enrolled Act thirty three report form I D M is complete and is being reviewed by the solar team. The battery storage systems draft ordinance is in process. We should have a legal review of the draft solar ordinance early in twenty twenty five. Been closely monitoring what's going on in Stark County as well. Unsafe structures, a demolition order has been sent or was sent out regarding a dilapidated structure at two oh five Akron Street. Unsafe building hearing November twenty six, which we had today, where this case was heard. A notice of violation was sent to six twelve East Lakeshore, the old theater for an unsafe structure. A satisfactory response was received from the legal counsel representing the estate of Kurt Newbauer. Representing Max and Kentucky Performing Arts Theater Foundation, Inc. That's the nonprofit that was referred to earlier. TRC did not meet in October, slackers. The Plan Commission, the Plan Commission met but had no hearings in October. The BCA had one hearing at October meeting. The building commissioner is working on updated application and permit fee schedule. Plan Commission will have a public hearing in December to hear the application and permit fee proposal for twenty twenty five. This will then come for, before the town council. Sincerely, Steve Gorski.
And, uh, Kevin, sorry.
It's easily, yes.
Do you happen to know Plan Commission and BCA are meeting at their normal times in December? Okay, thanks.
Speaking of that, looks like you've changed to Tuesdays now. Used to be Thursday meetings.
Because Thursday is Thanksgiving.
No, in December.
For the plan, the meeting, so the town council are in, oh, are in Tu, on Tuesdays. What's that?
Is that going to be normal or is that no, temporary?
That was moved. We explained it the last meeting. I'm going to cover it in my report, but I'll just do it now quick a second.
Right. Do it, whatever.
I mean, I'll just do it now. So December twelfth, there's a meeting on the US, Propel US thirty one, which is a Thursday, which will be the same night as our council meeting. Several members want to go and probably want representation at that meeting. So we moved that meeting to December tenth on Tuesday. Which is the night of my daughter, my granddaughter's kindergarten program, so just wanted to let you know. And then the final meeting in December will be on Monday, December thirtieth.
Oh, because of that?
Because of, yeah.
Yeah.
It would be the twenty sixth, but they're taking.
So I, I just thought it was both Tuesdays and I, I just thought it was.
If I wrote it Tuesday, it was.
Yeah. Tuesday, December tenth and Tuesday, November twentieth. Well, you know, that's this one.
December thirtieth.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question for Kevin about Steve's report.
Yeah.
Can you, can you, if, if you were living in the town Culver and you wanted to put an accessory structure on your property? Do you go to the planning commission? Do you go to Board of Zoning Appeals? Do you go to both? And what constitutes an accessory? Structure?
I'm going to.
Is a mobile home?
I'm going to give you a shortcut to the answer to your question. You go to Steve Gorski. And I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to be honest with you because I believe in saying in my pillar and column.
accessory structure does require a, a primary structure. So like if it's a garage or. Storage building, I guess. There's lots of things that can be considered.
Sure.
Three.
The indoor building permit.
Yeah.
And that would be through the county first and foremost.
But if you don't have a primary structure on that lot, technically you can't just put up an accessory.
Well, she got a variance, it's the BCA. Yeah.
And, and the reason I'm asking that is because I did, he sent a reply.
Mm-hmm.
A reply went back. And now I'm confused.
And this is why I'm very careful about not interfering in communication lines. I'm not being smart with you. I honestly, I believe in. Going to the source and, and when it comes to these matters, I always direct people to Steve. And that way, if he, I, I don't know what has been discussed previously. I don't know your specific case. But Steve should and does, and he'll be able to direct you and help you on that. Appreciate it. That's just kind of where I live at.
While we're talking about it, how come he's not been at the last two meetings?
I'm not going to entertain that, Russ, because I don't make assumptions about people. And I think Steve is a dedicated person. He, he has his reasons. He doesn't answer to me. So on this level. That would be for the council to ask if they so please.
How come he hasn't been at the last couple of meetings?
He was here earlier today at the unsafe building meeting.
Yeah.
But could not.
Does he have a conflict on Thursdays, I mean?
Possibly. Sometimes he does. Sometimes he submits a report to Kevin.
Well, that's two, that's two times he submitted a report. Why I'm asking.
Yeah.
If he's got a clamp fit on Thursdays, then. We need to know that.
I don't have an issue with it as long as we get the reporting and if we have questions, I think.
That's the point. You know, he could have answered this man's question if he was here.
But he's not.
Moving on.
Redevelopment Commission, Sally, you want to report?
Uh, yeah, they, now that the fire whistle was finished.
Sure.
At our last meeting, we did approve a side grant for Cafe Max to replace a window. That was broken. And also we worked on the twenty twenty five spending plan and approved. That plan, which was then spent, I think, given to Karen and Spence, Minnesota State. And our next meeting is changed, I think.
I think.
But yes, to make tea. Thursday, December nineteenth.
Anyone here to speak up behalf of the tree commission?
I am. Uh, we have updated IU, the tree resiliency program is underway. I got received an email follow up. I filled in the paperwork and the grant should be coming through. Uh, we're waiting to hear back from the fellow and the choice of the fellow for our community for the summer. Again, just a reminder, fifty new trees and those trees are guaranteed for three years. And Davies takes care of them for the first two years. They're about an inch. And the intern or the fellow, excuse me, works in coordination with our tree commission for the planting. Uh, I thought we would get some of the community school kids involved in, in the planting process. Uh, I think that's a wonderful idea and I, I really want to build some community service there. Uh, also, there are two positions. I've approached three people. And we are, there might be a third position. We'll wait and see. Um, and I will pay, I pass those names along to the tree commission for their consideration. And I'm waiting to hear back and I'll follow up on that in the next couple of weeks. As you can imagine, the tree commission's slow right now.
That's great that we had some interest.
Yeah, we did. And, and, and I think people who are going to add value. Um, and, and it's nice to see, not that there's any age discrimination or two who are young. And that's nice to get that kind of youth in there.
The number of the members that were on the tree commission were young.
Yeah, that's true. And we saw, right? Twenty nine some years of service, well footed, Sally. One does age in this town. So absolutely a hundred percent. So good things happen hopefully for trees in Culver. Your report? I'm here. All right. A little bit of follow up business up from earlier. We do need an approval from the council for the memorandum, a signing of the memorandum of understanding presented by one Marshall County. Um, just authorizing our president, Mr. Klevenger, to sign this document. We'll pass that.
To move my Mr. Monroe to authorize president sign the second.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Neer. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Close same time.
I'm going to take the council for that. Uh, Sally and kids, we have a long one. First and foremost, I have in front of me a quote from North Shore Fabrication. It is for the materials and the construction of our Pier B sockets. These installations will occur in the fall. We postponed the labor because of a timing issue in the fall. It, he would have had to start the project in the fall to get it done in completion by the spring and his regular commitment to put in the piers. This, of course, increased the cost of labor beyond a point that's feasible. Um, it almost to, almost, it did more than double the cost of labor. So we decided to delay and write it into the new RFP when we put it out for the three year contract next year that's being renewed. What I'm asking the council tonight is the approval for thirty eight thousand, three hundred and forty one dollars and thirteen cents. For the Pier, Pier B socket material. This material is universal and specially designed for our piers. It, it rates very high in terms of quality. And I also did some price point shopping because it's directly fabricated by Tim Uhas. It comes at a price point that's below what we can purchase through a middle, middle vendor. Um, so I ask for that approval tonight.
I make a motion to. For con, Pier B socket material. I assume this work to labor as well.
So it's all inclusive and that's galvanization included in that process. So we're getting finished material, which will be stored up at the water tower area that's locked away.
Yeah, it's installed in the stream.
It will get installed next fall probably. Most guys, most guys will want to do it as they pull out and, and when we get the new contract. So it will be for the twenty, it will be for the twenty twenty six pier season. That's correct.
They'll use this.
That's correct. It's going to save us in labor.
Okay. Okay, I'll second Dana's motion.
Okay, Mr. Neer moves that we purchase the sockets, second by Ms. Monroe, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Just for council information, talking with Karen, we thought it would come out of the CCD fund. Is that correct? So there's the funding. Um, next order of business, I have three invoices. Um, the first, they're all three from Midwestern Engineering for the review of the drainage project, engineering that, uh, for the sewer and water. The first one is for sixty two, six eight, eighty one. The second invoice is for seven thousand four hundred ninety one, thirty one. And the third is seven thousand seven hundred ninety four, twenty five. Anybody want to do quick math for me? Um, again, all three of these Midwestern engineer invoices were occurred as we were vetting the project for the water in the sewer. And have come to, they're from last year. So I ask the council for approval for all three of these invoices.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Mr. Monroe moves to approve the invoices from Midwest. It is second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Sherry, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Close same time.
Good. Hey, okay. So if I can, I need a motion to go ahead and pay, pay these invoices?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion to authorize Karen to pay the invoices to Midwestern.
Mr. Monroe moves to authorize payment.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sherry, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close same time.
Thank you. I needed to do both there and I appreciate you pointing that out. Sewer fund, correct? Karen, sewer fund will pay for this. I'm also going to approach redevelopment. So that's be done later. Uh, next I have a, a bill from, it looks like Xylem. Uh, this is from Bob and it will come out of the sewer fund. It is for. Ready for this? And a fluid pump. Who can live without that at your wastewater plant? Um, this pump is damaged and still operational, but in need of repair. And these are for the repairs. The total amount of the, of, of the bill or the quote that came back to us is thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety seven, fifty five. And the approval of this will allow us to make that necessary repair. And I ask the council for that approval.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Monroe.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sherry, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same time.
See a pretty good price for a pump.
You know, when it comes to fluid pumps, yeah, absolutely.
To say.
Oh, no, I trust Bob doing the shopping.
Price hasn't changed.
Impressive. Um, the next order of business is a maintenance position for the parks during the winter hours. Uh, we estimate ten to twenty hours a week or is necessary for the upkeep, cleaning up after events. Also shoveling snow, taking care of some ma, building maintenance that needs to be done. Uh, we've been very happy with Aiden Anis. If you haven't been around town, he's the young man that's been driving, picking up brush. And he does an amazing job for us and he will, I've talked to him about the position he's interested in. And I'd like to transfer him, tomorrow is his last day with utilities. I'd like to just go ahead and transfer him over at his current rate. Uh, into the Parks Department for ten to twenty hours, twenty hours being the maximum. Um, it seems to work his schedules, going back to school. I was glad to hear that. And I think he'll do a wonderful job for us and I ask for that approval.
Yeah, looking for approval.
I'll second.
Mr. Neer moves to approve the, I, I guess you'd say hiring. Um, Ms. Monroe seconds, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same time.
Graduate from all of. He did, he did. Been very solid.
He's a great employee, yeah.
Yeah, he's done a wonderful job and getting reviews on him. Uh, next opportunity we have, I was approached last week and I've had several meetings. Um, on the phone and, and Bill has been privy to a few of those meetings. Uh, we were approached by Dennis Quaid, or not Dennis Quaid, I wish I were, approached by Dennis Quaid, he's a pretty cool actor. Uh, Anthony Davis is his producer of Viewpoint with Dennis Quaid. There we go. It's a PBS special, runs nationally. Uh, we, we have been included, uh, they want to do a spotlight on Culver as a place to live, work and visit. Um, it really targets a demographic that overlaps with what I consider to be attractive for Culver. Um, they learned about us through our make our move and focus. Um, and through a series of phone calls established that we are probably worth doing a special on. Um, some of the attractive points they found was our developing downtown, the new housing coming in as well as Culver Academies being here. Um, the strong educational base and Culver community, having that security and that ability to develop children within that community environment over there has been, been a highlight. So what it is, is a project cycle that's going to take ninety to one hundred and twenty days. They would, obviously, you don't do a PBS documentary in Culver in the middle of December. There's not a lot to see. Um, in terms of the lake imagery, they're going to come in at late April or May and start production. What they need to start doing is script production. One of the nice things about this project is we have control over scripting. We have, uh, ability to approve or disapprove of the content that goes within the script. The second point that needs to be highlighted is that this is a professional production level on a national level. First of all, that media campaign is, is important, but we would own the rights to it. We could put this on our website. We can use this on our visitor center. And I think it overlaps with what we're trying to do with the visitor center. Uh, the third point is I think it has real implications beyond the town of Culver. I think we can find a narrative that includes Marshall County. And I'd like to see us try to do that. Uh, one of the, there's always the rub. The, the cost of this to over, to offset production cost is thirty, they ask each community to invest thirty grand. I've sent some of the material to you, um, in terms of examples of what they run. They, they also do one minute TV spots on CNN, MSNBC, all the major news. And they, essentially it becomes an advertisement for Culver. Uh, I think this is a wonderful opportunity. I think that the thirty thousand is an investment. What I'm asking the council tonight to do is approve this with a contingency. If we cannot find additional funds of sources or investment in this, then I'd have to come back to the council in the town of Culver. And pay the thirty thousand. They need a signature behind this within the week because they're on their own production schedule and they need a commitment. If I can have that security by the council that we will cover the. If I can have that security by the council that we will cover the thirty thousand if, if an additional fund is not located, that is what I'm asking tonight, if the council wants.
In other words, if, if Marshall County Tourism or Redevelopment Commission might not wanna step in.
I have, I have a pretty solid commitment from Marty and with redevelopment, uh, with the visitor center. Um, we really wanna approach, uh, Marshall County Tourism. I think there's an opportunity here for Marshall County. And I think there is a wonderful opportunity to kinda foster and, and, and encourage that relationship with Marshall County Tourism as well with Culver. So I think this is an opportunity I wanna present to them. I've talked to Mark Demore. And, um, I think we're gonna go and approach Marshall County Tourism. But again, just a commitment that if we, if things don't work out, we have the money. And I just ask for that.
The amount of content is tremendous there and so is the exposure. So I, I would make a motion to approve the expense um, based on Kevin's trying to get funds elsewhere, but I'm comfortable with thirty thousand.
Russ, that's right, that's accurate. That's right. Mr. Rowe moves, would you work to find the thirty thousand, Mr. Mayor seconds, and if there's any questions, get it there. If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Imos, sorry. One last request is that I need an authorization signature. I think it'd be appropriate that it's not mine since there's some funding involved and I'd ask that you authorize our president to sign the document.
I'll motion to approve having Mr. Clevenger sign the document.
Mr. Rowe moves to have the president sign the document as a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mr. Charlie, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're standing side.
Thank you. One last order of business before updates. Uh, we have a color run coming up in Saturday, June seventh. Get ready. Uh, it's a color fundraiser. We've done it before between nine AM and eleven AM. Uh, it's between a hundred and two hundred people, uh, anticipated. Seven oh one School Street, it takes place at the high school and then goes down through town. It's a wonderful time. Jessica McEwen is our contact, tireless worker over there at the school. Start and finish will be at Culver. It's one mile to the community school and back. It's a walk or run. Um, there is no street blockage requested. Uh, there will be no alcohol. Volunteers from Culver, uh, middle and high school sports teams will be there to support. Um, it's, it's a good time if you don't mind getting a little dusty with some color and opt out of that, but I ask for the, uh, the approval.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Rowe moves to approve. Mr. Charlie seconds.
Yeah, with David.
Oh, Mr. Mayor seconds, okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Yeah. Yeah, that's you for your single field. Anything else? Uh, a few updates quickly. Um, recently a lead cop write-in letter went out, um, from, uh, one-two-three Water and it was meant to contact people. We began last fall in twenty twenty-three with surveys that were sent out and postcards to the community to try to find out what their, uh, identify the material used for their connecting line between the house and the, uh, valve. Most of those came back and we were able to process them. There were still some people who did not respond to the survey back in the fall. Additional letters went out a week ago that caused some people some concern about lead in the water source. First of all, our testing is done by Ed M., like every other community, and our lead levels are way below uh, the accepted amount, so we do not have that issue. What the issue we need to determine is what kinda supply line is going between the house and our water supply. If it's galvanized, there's a chance that it had a lead gooseneck on it or that lead from water a long time ago may have contaminated that. So when we're looking for lines, if the house was built after nineteen eighty-seven, it's no longer a concern. Any house built after nineteen eighty-seven, they could not use lead. So they excluded those people. The only people who received letters were people who did not respond to the survey whose house was built before nineteen eighty-seven. So we're still trying to determine that. What we need to be able to do is collect that data so we understand how many lines are, need to be addressed through this federal and state mandate and then determine what kinda funding it's gonna require and how that's gonna work. So all we're looking for is data at this time. It is not a level of threat. It is not a warning to the community. It's simply a data collection device. And I wanna make sure if there's any questions out, if anybody's listening or if there's any questions, please come directly to the town and address them, right? We'll be more than happy. We, we fielded numerous phone calls. Um, so kinda put that there. Uh, we did get approved for the GeoBond. The signing is gonna be, uh, December twelfth for that. Um, things went very well. We were able to get a favorable interest rate and the amortization schedule looked, uh, very favorable, uh, because of that rate. The last thing is we're getting our pier slips, uh, filled up. We're getting, um, I'm having the joy of processing. It's a nice little daily task, uh, bringing in little checks. I feel like a good helper for Karen. Um, and bringing in money into the coffers. Uh, so we're getting those processed and then people are responding well to it. Other than that, I think I've had the floor logged in, so. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, your report?
I just have one claim over twenty-five hundred dollars for your approval and that is to Amstey Corporation for four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. And that is for the accounting software that we just, um, I was just trained on a few weeks ago and trying to implement and hopefully you saw a difference in your paycheck appearance, so. Yeah, that was. Maybe you got it by email. I don't know.
Very detailed.
But I just have a motion. I believe there will be one more bill for that and that's for, um, for the actual training businesses for this.
Oh, that's important.
To approve.
Mr. Rowe moves to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars, a second.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Mayor, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the second thing I have, uh, you approved this, a similar, uh, you did a similar motion last time. Um, but I just want, need approval for, um, the okay, um, approval of you signing the dispersment request and this deposit request for the ready funds that you approved, the payout that you approved last meeting, which is a hundred, the total would be a hundred and ninety-two thousand, five fifty-six, sixty-two. You're just approving me signing the paperwork to get that money moved where it needs to go.
I, I recalled that from last night. I made the motion that we authorized Karen to move the ready funds where they need to go to pay the bills on the project.
Mr. Rowe makes the motion to approve Karen to move the ready funds of the second. Mr. Mayor seconds, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And really it all comes down to Shannon working her magic, but. So, uh, then I provided October financial reports and if I can get approval of that. Motion to approve.
Mr. Rowe makes motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Charlie, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Then I sent out a, uh, two different contracts. Both were for, for South Shore IT Solutions, who takes care of all of our IT. Um, they manage all of our stuff, provide the Windows three sixty-five, manage those contracts. Um, all of our data backup. Um, there was one contract for three years, one for one year. Um, three years we would save or realize a discount, graduated discount. Um, and actually the total price is less than the current contract. So I did have approval. If we go three years and save a little bit of money, been with that, we've been with them since two thousand and fifteen. So they're taking good care of us.
Well, since you're gonna be here for those three years, dealing with IT issues, I would make a motion to approve your three-year contract.
I just want to approve South, uh, South Shore. Chair seconds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and then the last two, I already did this, but one more time, meeting reminders for December. Because of the holidays, um, council will meet Tuesday, December tenth and Monday, December thirtieth. And then redevelopment will be Thursday, December nineteenth. Plan Commission and BZA remain on the that, the third Tuesday and the third Thursday, so. And that's all.
We'll be updating the website too for those dates with agendas, so.
Oh, actually, one more thing. Um, with Mr. Githen's resignation, um, I believe there was an advertisement put out by the Republican Party that there will be a caucus and that caucus, I believe, is scheduled for December fifth. Um, and they are taking, you'll have to look at the newspaper for all the details.
Hmm.
Yeah, um, but if it's something that you're interested in filing to run, so. I would put you in contact with Deb Van Markus, the county, uh, Marshall County Republican Chair, so.
Anything else, Karen?
That's all.
Okay. We don't have an attorney here today, so there's no attorney report, but I know of you.
I don't pretend to be an attorney ever.
Council issues, Mr. Mayor.
I have no issues.
Mr. Rowe.
I, it's not our employees to know how grateful I am for them at this holiday season because they always show up and uh, we always count on them and rely on them and I take it for granted a lot, but since it's Thanksgiving, I wanna say happy Thanksgiving to the employees as well as Karen and Julie who keep the town moving and running around the clock, literally. So, thank you. Grateful for y'all.
Very nice. Sally? I have nothing other than I'll second her. I have nothing other than I'll third. Okay, then he said.
March and a move to claims?
The motion moves claims is a second.
So.
Uh, okay, Mr. Charlie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Attorney.
Meeting.